Zero elevation out to the one, one foot depth that will survive with minimal water. But you start putting in these fancies like the latorals and some of the others, lots of luck. We go four months with no water. So we're, why they look nice and why they look real pretty on this paper, this development order, they look pretty, it can't happen. They will grow. So it's, Gateway is in a real interesting position, and the county doesn't have any answers for it. They don't have any answers for the control of the water level.
But we'll figure out what we're talking about, what looks nice and survives.
And they don't have any answers for our fish, the playcups. They don't have any answers for all the carp we have. They don't have any answers for all the things that are causing our problems. But yet they want to tell us how to do it. And my deal is, I'm not listening to them. They don't know what they're talking about.
Well, one of the things that they stated was, when they talked about the minimum when they were here, and they had our little workshop with them, was they anticipate when these start out, they're going to spread. That's what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to spread. So I'm just gonna say that the wholesale removal of laterals from the lake bank that happened in Hampton Park, that right before rainy season, we stripped the lake bank to the ground, and it's ripe for erosion. And I can't believe that anybody would think that that is better than the laterals. All we're at, we're gonna have to go back in eventually and repair that lake bank if it remains the way that it is. So I don't see that as a solution. I think we, we have to worry about how much all of this is gonna cost the residents. And if we remove laterals and then we have to repair lake banks, we've wasted money in two different ways.
May I?
Yes.
Thank you, Coach.
I've listened to all of this, and believe it or not, we had similar discussions about laterals, I think it was three years ago. And at that point, I thought that we had made some real progress. How we got to where we are exactly, I'm not sure.
Lack of maintenance.
What's that?
Lack of maintenance. That's how we've got to where we're at right now, because of lack of maintenance in the ponds and not following the DOs. It's lack of maintenance as far as Hampton Park goes, there was a, there was a stag point where nothing was done to the pond.
Excuse me, have you been recognized by the chair?
No, I'm coming up right now.
Now, let me finish before you start, will you?
You turned in a sheet, we'll follow you.
I did, okay.
When you consider the benefit of the laterals, lake bank stabilization, of which we are spending millions of dollars of repairing lake banks here in Gateway, wildlife, small fish and birds, and the fighting of the algae, and if you've never been down to Fort Myers Beach lately, or over in Cape Coral to see what algae is like, I really suggest you do, because it is horrible. It's horrible to look at, it's horrible to smell, and it's horrible on your lungs. And anything that we can do to keep our ponds as, I'm gonna say pristine as possible, I'm gonna be in favor of. And if that means 100% laterals, then I'm gonna vote for it. And the fact that we don't have enough money to make 100% laterals next week, or next month, or next year, is beside the point. We're gonna have a, we'll have a, a, a policy, and everybody will know what that policy is, and we will strive to get to it as soon as we can. Thank you very much, Ben.
Good luck, Mr. Chairman. Nice job.
And before I ask Chris to bring up the next speaker, I just want to point out again, and Lee County has mentioned this more than once, these are stormwater ponds, they're not recreational lakes. The CDD owns the lakes, they're not owned by individual lot owners. So the standards are what the CDD wants it to be that's the most cost-effective for all of the residents in Gateway, because we're all gonna pay to maintain this. And we need to decide what that's going to be. Chris is the next speaker.
Sally Baron, Ashbrook Court. And we have two other speakers besides her.
I'm sorry, I didn't get the name. Would you help me, please?
Sally Baron.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am Sally Baron. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you. I'm at 10-238 Ashbrook Court in Hampton Park. And I'm here, I was here two weeks ago, and I talked to you about a petition that we were doing, and I was gonna come and give you some results of the random samples of what we've done so far. But before I do that, I would really like to just make a couple of comments. I appreciate what all of you do. This is like a huge thing, you're volunteers. I know that Supervisor Tinkell puts in a tremendous amount of time with all of the big projects going on, to save all the banks that have eroded so badly and get all of that done. It's huge. There's a $200 million bond plus that Hampton Park people also are gonna be paying that we're subject to for the next 20 years.
Not 200 million.
Oh, I'm sorry, oh, I'm sorry. To me, it seems like 20 million. I was talking about paying for it. I'm sorry, it's 20 million. It's a lot of money to us.
It'll be 200 if we keep going.
Yeah. It's, it's an awful lot of money to us.
Everyone's happy to hear that number, by the way.
I know. I just pulled it out of here. Anyway, for those of us in Hampton Park, we're paying on that too, just like the people that have totally eroded banks. When you look at the DOs, you know, I, I, I have to answer Supervisor Tinkell, because I just got the DO after the meeting last time, and I did go through it very seriously. One thing that I noticed about, when they talk about the laterals, it absolutely says minimum requirement, there's nothing that says maximum requirement. So that is in there.
The place that says minimum requirement on the design plan. I'm looking right at it. The PLS shore length must be calculated at 25% of the total linear feet of lake control elevation.
There's another part, and I can show it to you.
That's talking about the way you place them. That's a totally different issue. That's my point. We got late talking about professional stuff. We need professionals in here.
Well, I'm only, I'm only quoting off of one page that I read where they were talking about all the laterals throughout the 10 lakes. So one of the things that comes up for me was that in 2018, before you took our lakes on, Mr. Tinkell said he walked every inch of the lakes, did the whole thing. The county provided a compliance certificate, and Lennar wanted to get out of there and move on with the other development projects. And I understand, Mr. Tinkell, that you were the person that recommended taking our lakes, which were pristine and they have no erosion.
We got the approval, just for the record, we got the approval after Carol List came in and did her survey and indicated that's an acceptable form. The issue was, she knew and we knew, Elle can attest to it, that the work by Lennar had not been done in accordance with the plans and specifications in the DO. We knew that. But there was another thing that a lot of people are forgetting that happened back then. It was a little deal called blackmail. If you recall, what Lennar said, "You've got 30 days to accept this, or we're turning it over to the HOA." Do they remember that little deal they were gonna do? We did not want that to happen. So we consented with it. That's what happened.
Well, we're thankful, but I'm just surprised as much as Lennar wanted to get out, that you couldn't have said, "We'll do it, but you gotta do this." Now, the other thing that surprises me is that I've talked to a couple of different people that are experts in this field, and they said that the, the conventional view in the DOs, and when people were doing these things, was that you would plant in certain areas and they would populate around the lake eventually. So you didn't have to go all the way around the lake. They, just like this gentleman said, they will grow around the lake. And that was the intent at the time. That was the conventional wisdom as they refer to it. So it just seems to me that we're looking at black and white, and then I, what I'm gonna do for you after this meeting is I'm gonna spend the next couple of weeks, and I'm gonna try to go and find whatever narrative we have not seen that talks more about the purpose of why they put those areas there. And I know that document must exist, because most of them have that. So I will do that for you. I'll research that on my half to get that, so we can get some clarity for the committee.
Well, that's in 10-418. That's in 10-418, and very clear, the reason they do that, and the reason they call out those percentages and lengths, is because they base it all on the perimeter of the lake. One per foot, that's the requirement. That's exactly how they're doing it. The trouble is, you can't go out and put them one per, per, per foot.
Yeah, I did see that.
What they do is they tell you to put them in areas, one, you don't want them, and they say right in here, they would prefer them not being on residential and/or commercial properties. So that makes it difficult when you have ponds like over at Hampton Park, where a lot of them are totally surrounded by homes. And so it makes it difficult.
Which were in the DO.
But this is the job of the landscape architect, and that's what he did. And I think, again, they did an excellent job there. But if it is what you're saying is their fault, why don't they have that in 10-418?
I would think there's some document or person somewhere.
I've looked all over for that. Can't find it, because Elle and I were out.
I will, I will help with that.
Elle and I were out at Santa Bell, what was it, two years ago, Elle, when we had the conference out there, with all the lake people, all the experts. The question came up about that 25%. The county could not, like Doug, what Doug was saying earlier, which, what's the point in no return? They won't go over that 20%. They will not say one word about going over, because they don't have the facts.
Let's allow Sally to finish, because it's her time.
I just wanna make sure that that is brought up as to where that came from.
Okay. So with that in mind, we're looking at the property that was, the five homeowners' property that was just stripped, totally stripped down to bare dirt, sitting there in the rain. I look at it every day. There are a number of issues. We went out and we surveyed some people, and I'm gonna tell you that the absolute majority of people in Hampton Park, of course, bought in there because of the way it looks. They like the way that it looks. They want to keep it the way they look. And they want money in the budget, and feel there should be money in the budget, to trim them back, or to thin them out, so you can get closer to, to the sides, to the bank. And that's their wish. And the thing that comes up is, what are we paying all this money for, if there's no money in the budget to do that?
I agree. I've seen that a lot, that we should be maintaining the laterals.
Yeah, if there's 20 million, and other lakes that didn't come to you in pristine condition the way ours did, and they're getting the whole benefit out of it, that just seems a little bit, like we're the.
What if it's not even pristine?
Like we're, like we're the stepchild. And so the stepchild, the stepchildren are, are not happy. And in that survey, we interviewed 62 Hampton property owners. Fifty-nine property owners signed a petition, and on Lake Three alone, we had 23 property owners that signed. That they, and I, maybe what I should read to you before I tell you the numbers, is what they're signing to, what they wanted.
Sally, that's what you read the last time. That's the document you, that's the document you read at the last meeting.
Yes, but I think Mr. Tinkell took part in my time. I'd like to get that back.
He took three minutes of it, so I've been counting.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to move on.
Only three?
So I'm, I'm done here. I can't even say this. Mr. Tinkell, may I?
Go ahead.
Sherman? Okay. Okay. So what they were signing, and I have them here, and I have an envelope with copies of this, so you have every signature. And at the bottom, it, it talks about what it is. It said, "Therefore, we request that the board review the issue above." Above, and above is the issue, "They would like the GSCDD board to, one, review why this action was taken on Lake Three, on behalf of only five property owners." That is an amazing thing in a community that is set up to look a certain way, and you would absolutely go in with no notice and do that. There's gotta be some reason, more than what I've heard, that caused that. Does the CSCDD board of supervisors intend to remove all the laterals on Hampton Park lakes and replace them with rocks?
That was a staff decision based upon the development order.
That's a staff decision? If you replace them with rocks? The board has no oversight for that?
No, no, no. You asked about the removing, and it was a staff decision to go out and remove them.
Oh, I, I understand, I do understand that. I'm just saying, is, is the board in favor of, is that the endgame?
Well, I think that's what we're here talking about, is how do we handle this issue?
Because nobody wants it replaced with rocks. They like Hampton Park the way it looks, they want to retain the appearance of the Hampton Park lakes and development as it is, they would like the laterals and spike rush grass thin and trimmed as needed. They do not want any further removal of lateral and spike grass. They support the request to the GSCDD to allocate funds to the maintenance budget to trim and thin the Hampton Lake laterals and grass as needed. Everybody, out of everybody, we talked to 62 property owners, 59 property owners, signed the petition with that, and I have the petition, you already saw it. And out of the, the additional three, two property owners we interviewed stated they did not like laterals or spike rush grass. And one property owner stated she wanted, she wanted the spike rush grass, but does not like the laterals. That's 5%. So, so that's what, what it says, and I will give this.
And what do you have, 350 homes in Hampton Park?
Pardon me?
350 homes?
No, 569.
569.
And I was amazed when we went out and we went on every street and did a sample. We didn't get everybody, because this conveniently happened right before seasonal people left. And so that's about half of our community, which is astounding to me. I was shocked that there were so many. But anyway, I will give this information to you all. And again, I thank you very much for, for all your consideration on this. I know it's a very difficult job. Go ahead.
I just was going to address something about the maintenance of those laterals, because Elle and I have been out there, and we talked about it, and she was supposed to find out how, get a hold of aquagenics to trim them.
And I also have a contact you could have, of the company that does it for Miramar, that they think they could give you a decent estimate as well, if you're looking for a couple of different places. And the problem with Lake Three is it's the tiniest lake in the system. So it is getting overthrown. Our, our residents on the lake have been asking to have them back, and nothing has been done. We didn't know that there was any, no money in the budget to do it. And that is an area where you would really need to kind of get them back a little bit more. But I, I drove all around the lakes, and they all look pretty darn good. They're bigger, so it's not as noticeable. So I think the, the real essence is just periodic trimming.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Who next?
Justin Schersire.
Chrisell.
Chrisell.
Hi, Board, how you doing? I'm Justin Chrisell. I live in Kentwood. I hear a lot about what's being talked about as far as these laterals go, of course, as we spoke a few board meetings ago. The lake maintenance plan that was filed with Lee County State, the Gateway Services Community Development District hereby agrees to maintain the lake subject to the development order D0, or DOS 2014-00045, to the specific standards of that development order as argumented herein. The, and then I hear, as we've been discussing about percentages, the 25%, there's a 25% minimum, but there's no max. The, that I can understand, but when you look at the Lee County Florida Land Development Code, as it's stated in 10-418, it clearly states, "Whenever possible, the PLS must be located away from residential lots to avoid maintenance and aesthetic conflicts with users." This isn't about fishing, this isn't about, it's about what I see out my, my line, what I see out at the end of my yard. You know, it's, it's clear. I mean, I'm, I'm not going off of my personal preference. I'm not going off of how I feel it should look. I'm going here. If, if the DO shows 20 feet of laterals all the way around the lake, I guess that's the way it's gonna be. But that DO doesn't show any of that. It doesn't show all the way around the lake. It shows certain sections where they belong. Legally, they need to be maintained. They, they need to be maintained, and they need to be maintained per the development I know Sally Baron, she was just speaking, spoke about a petition. I had a resident approach me yesterday, actually, and said there was a lady walking around and knocking on doors, talking about a petition being signed. And the gentleman told her, says, "You know, I'm not for signing a petition about keeping these grasses in Kent Lake. Actually, I don't really approve of them." And she goes, "Well, then I can get my paper back?" You know, I mean, that's kind of, is it an official petition? I mean, is this an official petition that's actually going out and being signed? I mean, is this something that's gonna, do you know what I mean?
That was a different paper. That was not the petition.
Oh, that wasn't the petition?
No. It was, it was.
Oh, this isn't an argument? This is, you gotta kind of speak like you do.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct you.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'm just going off of what a homeowner told me. So yeah, I mean, that's really all I have to say about it. I feel that, that our lakes in Hampton Park need to be maintained as close to the DO as possible. I'm not saying, measure out exactly 25%, that's the minimum, that's where it needs to be. We understand it's, if, they are going to grow, and they're gonna expand a little bit, but not what you see in the photo. You know, I mean, I looked at Jim, Jim Brand's handout, there was a photo on the second page. It looks like the day after they removed them, any, any, any time you remove laterals the next day, they're gonna, I mean, the lake bank is gonna look bad. There it is, right there. That's the day after. So now we're going off of this, we're handing this out to residents of Hampton Park, going, "This is what your lake bank is gonna look like if they come and remove them." I got a picture, I got a picture that I took here. It doesn't look like that now. Correct, it doesn't.
It's dirt now.
This is what the lake bank looks like. Hold on, I'm sorry. There's one. I got one. Yeah, just, it's, you know, the water level is low. As the water level rises, I mean, it takes time for the banks to settle down. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and go, "Okay, guys, who thinks we should keep them? Who thinks we shouldn't?", you know, and raise hands. There's a lot of folks here that don't like them, you know? So, um, so yeah, I'm not gonna take any more of the five minutes, because I know maybe some other folks would want to talk. So I appreciate what the board can do for us in Hampton Park, and hopefully we can get this resolved in a easy manner. Okay? Huh? We have one last speaker.
Okay.
Who didn't think we would be here? The governor took over the East Mountain Lake. This was an avenue. Jim Wazinski from Silver Lakes. He's here to talk about lateral overgrowth, but he's not from Hampton Park.
No. You ever hear something different? Jim Wazinski, Silver Lakes, I'm on the board of directors of Silver Lakes. I was on Ed's committee, putting the pond standards together, I made every single meeting, met every single expert we had. And myself, as well as the community, are highly disappointed with what's happened. We had our ponds pretty much without laterals, because our development order says, there's no lateral requirement in our development order. There are no lateral planting zones, there is nothing, there is nothing in the environmental resource. So our community, unlike apparently Hampton Lakes, actually took a survey of all the waterfront homeowners. 93% said, "Get rid of them." Only 7% wanted them. Everybody wants them out. Now, we did have, they were mostly out, and now they're starting to come back in again. And we're wondering why. I've asked for the contract for aquagenics through Gateway Services, through just a document request, I haven't received it yet, and I'm curious as to what's in there. But at the end of our workshop, we did have the RFP that was going out to everybody. Let me just read something on lateral maintenance, what it says. And again, I don't know if this is an aquagenics contract, I'm trying to get it, and it may not be. But it says here, in the requirements, this is quote, "Laterals behind residential and commercial lots shall be continuously removed unless a specific lateral zone has been identified herein." Silver Lakes, we don't have any identified laterals. So the question is, what can we do, how can we get these things removed? Now, it's not as bad as it was years ago, when they were removed last, especially on our two, on Lake 85 and Lake 88, there's just kind of spontaneous growth. Much of it is 20 feet out into the lake. You have the earlier picture, it's way worse than that. It traps algae in the summer. Fish get under there, can't get out, they die, stinks. And our residents, you know, want them out. Our board of directors voted unanimously, more than once, to approach Gateway Services to get them removed. Now, we, I was not aware of this rewrite that's going on. I, just, the first I heard of it was today, of the, of the standards. I had corresponded with Chris a little bit, and I understand that perhaps it would allow communities, HOAs, individual homeowners to request to have those laterals removed. Our board of directors highly support that. We had a meeting yesterday and talked about that. Our VOD would support, in the middleman, if we have to. And if we have to pay a little bit more, you know, the individuals will pay a little bit more, let the specialist assess it back to them, and that'll be it. Everyone will be happy. If we could use our own contractor, under the supervision or approval of the board here, that is fine, and whatever. But we overwhelmingly, overwhelmingly would like to have those laterals removed. There's a handful of people, as I said, there was 11 out of 165, who said that they would like to keep them. And if it's, if we have the flexibility even to do that, and we went back and forth with Chris, it sounded like maybe, possibly, that could be, where the HOA would say, "Okay, remove them except for boom, 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 boom. We'll pay you this, we'll specialist assess it back," and everything would work. But I, I guess, what, what bothers me is, in that work group, everybody we heard from in the conclusion of the work group, and it said it in the, in the standard, which are on the, on the website, it's on the website, that the DO is what controls. And our DO was, was developed before 10-4, you know, before any of that. It's from the 1990s. It's controlling, it's never been, it, there's never been a major reconstruction of the lake, there's not a new DO. And no one, these houses were sold, you know, there were big premiums for waterfront property. And nowadays, especially in the summer, when you have all the spike rushes all over the place and the algae, it's a discount. Everyone's property values are down. Everyone would say property values go down if you don't have them. What, you gotta go to Silver Lakes, it's the other way around. There's a property discount on the lakes. Property premiums are on the, on the reserve. So that's my request, and if there is some way that we can get flexibility for the board, the HOAs themselves, to handle this somehow, either as a middleman, to get things taken care of, that would be great. And I just said my time. Just one quick question, this comes up every meeting we have, when is Phase Two gonna start? Of the lake bank remediation?
The, it was approved, the facility plan was done, and it's. The, it was approved, the facility plan was done, and at our next meeting, the engineers bring in the contract to proceed with the song, for the next 15 months.
Okay, so we're in, we're in Phase Two?
I don't know, Jim.
No, we are in Phase Two.
I don't remember what the numbers were.
No, no, we are in Phase Two.
You're in Phase Two.
We're in Phase Two. Sometime in the next couple of years?
Yes. I'd say that's probably safe to say.
Couple, to me, means two. Around here, that's not necessarily true.
Yeah, no, so how long is Phase One? Thanks for that.
I'll get you on track.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that's all our speakers.
Alan, anything you want to say, before we close the workshop?
I could just, we do a little bit of, I mean, that's, well, Al, Al's got the working hot.
Okay.
Simultaneously.
Yes. Remember, one of the things that you put in CAM, and CAM is, grammatically is supposed to be, it says, yes, that you can do it, so it should be changed to may.
Point taken.
All right.
May is for this.
What CAM means is, it's already accepted.
Sign, sign.
But that's two.
Mr. Thigh?
Yes.
Anything else you'd like to add?
I've got one. Mr. Bates?
I'm good.
Mr. Tinkell?
I'm good.
With that, I...
Do they have a report for this?
Yeah, I'll, we'll close the workshop. The one thing that I'd just like to bring out is that, this isn't a final document today by any means, if there's things that you would like to see changed or added, please send Alan email. All right, with that, five minute break.